Lisa, you want to go ahead with the finance?
Sure. Oh, exactly. I would call the finance committee to order. Tonight, we have a discussion, update implementation of online payment capability. That is a welcome topic, Mr. Caluccio. You have the floor.
Well, thank you. Well, thank you very much. Lisa, I'd enact myself and Waterfield will work on this for really long. I started off saying that we're probably 45 days on implementation and a lot of things need to get finished up and we'll be ready to go. So tonight, we're going to give you a demonstration on how it works. Basically, look at this slide. This is what we're here for. The picture on the top left was yesterday. So what do you want to do? Do you want to go to Stephanie and say you all have to pay your taxes? No way. Let's do it online. That's the way to do it, right? I know you can't see these and I apologize for that. I had a couple of copies of them. These are the service fees. If you want to cast them around, take a look at them. These are the different service fees for the different types of payments.
It must be very small, huh?
Yeah. Maybe that's on purpose, right? Because not scary or something. When we get into it, showing it to you, there'll be a vibrant on the screen. There'll be a link on our homepage and there'll be something similar to this. Doesn't necessarily have to be this. We just did this as an example. And it's showing you that we'll be able to view and pay your tax bills online, your utility bills and general bill, municipal vouchers per se. Be able to use MasterCard, Visa, Discover Card, and eChecks, which is certainly very popular today. So with that, again, if you'll be able to question online, we're going to bring you right into it. We're going to give the floor to Lisa and she's going to explain exactly what we're doing here.
The first thing I'm going to do is, we have two databases set up. We have our live database set up and our train database set up. We've been working very much in our train database, but I want to bring you to the live database just to show you a couple of features that we don't have in the train database. So here is our home screen. And as you can see, we have a message that tells everybody we're currently under construction. And we have this completely shut down so that no one can accidentally access it at this point. So in order for me to get in, I have to click on the citizen self-service and I have to use a login. You've got full screen here. It automatically shows that I'm logged in as the administrator. And the resource area here is for us to be able to add attachments like the page to explain to people how you pay your bills online and all things associated with that. I come down to my main announcement and this can be used for different messages we want to get out to the public such as when tax bills are due, when utility bills are due, and so on and so forth. Also on my sidebar here are lists of the bills that I'm going to be able to pay. So I'm going to just look into the real estate part here. And here again, we have our convenience fees very laid out on each one of our different bill type payments so that the customer will know exactly what the service fee is we're paying online. And that service fee goes to our vendor who is offering this online service for. So I have a number of criterias that I can search for. In this case, I'm going to search by name and Mr. Waterfield has so graciously let us get into his tax. Hope you pay your taxes!
It's being recorded too, you know.
See if he's up to date.
So now I get all of the Waterfield's throughout the city's bills because I just put in Waterfield. My tax here, we have them available from 2010 to 2015. I just double-click on this right here to bring up the latest bill. So here's Mr. Waterfield.
So we're in the live database now. The images of the bills are only available in the live database. So we're going to go jump back and forth between the two just so that you can see.
So if you notice on my sidebar, there's a lot of information that I can get into. I can get into my property detail, which gives me my assessed value, my charges for 2015, my property parcel ID, and the owner name. I can also go into, I'm going to skip over owner information because we have a lot of details. I'm going to skip over to my assessment and it gives me my assessment figures. I can also go to our tax rates and it gives me a breakdown of what the taxes assessed, rated for. Now I can go into all of the edit bills. And this lists the bills right through 2001. And it does say which ones I'm paying. The one thing I did want to point out here is we implemented our Tiger Content Manager in 2013. Anything before that, you wouldn't be able to view the bill because the Tiger Content Manager is what gives us the access to actually view the bills.
You'll see the text of the bill, but you won't see the image of the bill.
So I actually want to view the bill. So I can view the bill. I can print it out to my home computer. I can finalize it in my computer.
This is city taxes on, not school or county, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so not the school taxes.
Well, the county taxes are on that bill.
It is.
Or on the city bill, the school taxes are separate.
Are on that or separate, okay.
Now I'm just going to show you one of our general municipal voucher bills. And this time, I am going to insert a customer number. Again, we have the fees that are clearly laid out for everyone to see before they even get into the system to view their bill. And those fees are passed directly to our supplier, the vendor that's hosting. Right, and they set those fees, we didn't?
Yes. These are calculated, the way they were calculated was based on the average bill amount. So we had to give them ideas of what our average bill amounts were and then they calculated the convenience fees based on that. Every page Lisa's going to will show different convenience fees, you know, different rates.
Okay. Now John has generously offered the voucher. So I can see all of the billing in the total unpaid amount and the total balance bill. Each one, I can go into each detail, see the bill. I can, again, get my customer information. I can manage the bills and I can view the bills. Now I'm going to jump over to the train database because I'm going to show you how you actually pay your bills.
Do you want to pay this bill in live?
Over here, I have a secured login for our general municipal voucher bills because we can separate what can be a secured login bill type and what anyone can access without a login. So in this case, in our train database, we have secured our general billing, which the user would have to create a login, which is as easy as hitting register and putting there. Over here, our utility and our real estate billing doesn't require that. Anyone can get in. So I can just click on there. The other thing I wanted to point out is this time I didn't use a capital W. They're able to search. They don't have to be case-sensitive. They're able to put. So in this case, it still does owe his tax bill, so we'll go ahead and pay his bill. We just click the pay button. Gives me the option, this is the train database, so it's just giving me the option of pay credit card or pay e-check, the debit card, so on, will come on when we have the system up and running. So I'm going to pay by credit card. It again, gives me the bill that I'm paying, the quarter that I'm paying. I'm going to continue there.
While she's typing this in, at this point, we're on the Paymentis website.
Yes, with any other credit website, anything that has the asterisk next to it is a required field, which they will have to type.
So John, my bill information is available to anybody who clicks on real estate?
Public information.
So that's public information, right?
It should.
Okay.
In fact, what we're doing here is, Ed has people coming into his office every day searching for tax bills, so hopefully that'll reduce some of that activity that we have.
What prevents somebody from going further on my tax bill, trying to make a payment using false information or whatever?
That's good. I don't know, maybe they want to prohibit that.
All right.
But if you want, we can check into it.
Okay.
So it automatically...
It's okay. Someone could do that, yes.
Yeah.
It automatically brings up my parcel ID. I click that I'm making a property tax payment. I click that I'm making a credit card. Up comes the information for me to choose what credit card.
These are secure? These? Yes.
You can see in the bar up top, it says HTTPS.
Yes. And we don't maintain any credit card information on our servers at all.
Here again, a very important field about the fees, the service fees. It will make you check that you agree to pay for the Paymentis service fee. It gives you the exact amount this fee's going to be. Over here, if you click on read the terms, it gives you the Paymentis terms for the payment. Again, it makes you agree to the terms and conditions or else it won't accept the payment. And then you are brought to a confirmation window. Now, in that time, that bill is doing the confirmation, an email is getting sent to that person paying the taxes saying that they received the payments. So they can either print this page, they can make another payment, or this back home will link them back to our website. And here's the actual email that the customer will have. So would you like me to show you a different type of billing? I mean, I can show you any other type of billing.
Let's break for questions first. You do have an opt-out once it shows you the composed fee, right? So because 3% might not mean, so when that $21.58 or whatever pops up, they know before they click pay that that's going to happen. My only other question is, you showed us the banner on the web and you said it might not look exactly like that, but is that where to be positioned? Will it be easy to find like that?
I would get there, potentially.
Well, that's still up for debate.
Maybe that's one page.
We certainly want...
Okay. Yep, great. Other questions or comments?
I've got one question.
I'm sorry, this is just for the table, this kind of thing. Yes, Ms. Cordial?
So the fees, because that, to pay that one particular bill was like almost $22. So that's about the average for any organization that does this. But, you know, I'm accustomed to seeing one fee regardless of what your bill is. So the fact that it's basing on per, the amount of the bill.
Yeah, that's not how the credit card companies do it with municipal bills. It's based on the average amount because they need to make money on it too, so.
Look, it's not just municipal bills. You will find that you're using a credit card store or any transaction.
That's why we're asking different places.
Yeah, the retail industry is paying for those fees.
And, you know, it's a fee of convenience, right? You come down to City Hall or mail and your checks are still, you know, for 48 cents, they're still options, right?
Money, you can use an e-check.
Right. So it's personal.
How much is it for the e-check?
$50 for Waterfield.
And same with the debit cards.
Ms. Steve, you know, I'm sorry, Mr. Noble wants to weigh in.
It's exactly the same. The percentage of the value is when you use a major credit card. If you choose to use an e-check, your fee is just 0.56%.
Yeah, they actually have a business on the table.
And then, or if you choose to use a debit card, then it's 2.5% and I believe. So it's all, so you have several choices and as John and Lisa were mentioning, e-checks are sort of the new wave and then you can...
Mr. Ferrari?
What would the option be to have like an auto payment application to this, you know, like a quarter? To have it come out of your checking account rather than going online every time?
To that. It certainly was not discussed during the implementation, but it's something that we can evaluate and give you that information.
And, you know, maybe the safety behind that, you know, as far as, you know, secure website, would that still be secured would be my other question. And if not, what would not be, the penalties be if for some reason the card is canceled? Do you move and you don't update your information? So you don't, what other things would we have to discuss in order to have that?
Mr. Wood, you there?
Are we allowed to save info, information, personal information, payment? Can we use?
We do not, we do not maintain the credit card information ourselves. That's on, we don't want anything to do with that. That's on the Paymentis website. They're responsible for it. We don't want to get in that business, you know, everybody, I don't have to tell you, you know, Target, Home Depot, they all make their credit card information from time, we don't want to be involved in that.
Mr. Mayor?
Just, Mr. Ferrari's quite there. Most banks wanted to be a monthly cycle so that where we're on a quarterly cycle, it's not quite as easy to adapt to what their standard payment is.
Mr. Koshner?
Thank you. And again, great work here. I think this is something, again, the council's been talking about for many years and I'm glad that, very glad it's going to come on board. My other concern, again, down the road, down the pike, I think is to see if we can partner any way with the school district. I know we've severed ties with them in the past that they're collecting their own proper tax now, but I just think with this day and age of us being online now, if there's any way we can partner with them, possibly yes, possibly no. Again, they're insane about we are as far as collecting taxes. I just think, again, it's very convenient, this online portion. But again, just something I'd like to consider down the road, if we can partner with them. Also, I've never paid taxes in my life, so just so you guys know that, because I'm an escrow. Thank God for that, because otherwise my house would be in foreclosure up there among them. Anyway, so I can actually view my bill online too, even though it's paid by escrow, I can find out what they've been paying and all that information's up there as well. Yes, and that's what I'm actually thinking about now, so. Very good. Again, thank you, good job everybody.
Thank you. Other questions, comments? Did anyone want to see another example of a payment before we wrap this up? Is there any other business to come before the finance committee?
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
All right, I'll call to our city development and planning. Item number one is actually a resolution we've already passed out of committees, but we just delayed the presentation of it, so that'll take place on Monday. The second one is a ceremonial resolution for the Spelling Bee champions, Mr. Kozier.
Yep, I'll give the information to Mr. Phil. We had three on Monday, two from Page, I believe almost from Zoller. So the principals and the students will be here for the presentation.
Nice.
So I'll undertake a motion to approve that? Okay. Seconded by Mr. Ferrari, all in favor?
Aye.
The third is a ceremonial resolution for Jenny Carpen. Mr. Wiggie, you would...
Yes, she's a young lady that in, before Christmas, she was a cashier at Walmart. She's a Mount Pleasant resident and she's a student at SCC. I think she just graduated from the nursing program. But being, I don't know if you're aware of her story, she later screamed an act of kindness to a senior citizen that was short of money on her register. She put her own on the end. She didn't want any notoriety, but it got back for her boss and it went national as a matter of fact. So I think that's something that we should recognize because this lady certainly shows some trudges in being a compassionate person, so that's what's about.
Okay, so I'll undertake a motion to approve that. Mr. Ferrari, seconded and supported field, all in favor?
Aye.
Item number four, Union College Hockey and the Mayor's Cup. Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Ferrari, is Union scheduled to bring it over for presentation?
Not through us.
Well...
I haven't heard anything.
I'm not aware of it.
We can try to get contact information tomorrow and follow up on it.
Okay, so this is not something that we would have to vote on?
We're there to do a resolution.
Well, we could do it.
Well, it's true, we should do a resolution.
Yeah, that's true.
To a resolution or under presentation?
Okay, let's move a resolution for that. So, okay, Ms. Porterfield, seconded by Mr. Ferrari, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, item number five, secret findings from Mohawk Harbor. This is an email to everybody and Ms. Mancini?
Hello, everybody. It's okay with you, I was hoping to discuss the secret findings and the waterfront secret findings kind of all in one.
Yes.
We would appreciate that.
So we're kind of at the final step of the process, you folks bringing this forward next week for final approval. I believe that you have the planning commission minutes and also the public hearing minutes from last Monday. About 20 people spoke, as we know, and a few concerns were brought up, so I just wanted to address a few of them, kind of go through the bullets. And I put together a sheet with some study. Yes. So the first is public access and the concern that we're not ensuring public access to the waterfront. So I just wanted to kind of walk through what it was before versus what it is now and kind of the interpretation that we're taking. The New York State Bike Hike Trail is going to be going through the property. That's going to be funded through a grant that the county has received using Canal Core funding, and so that has to be public access, so that's like point number one. The marina and the harbor area is also going to be accessible to the public as well as the retail area and the casino itself for obvious reasons. The way that it was put in before, which I think is causing some of the confusion, it was written under the section that said density incentive, and that's usually used as a planning tool, very subjective. So the whole point of us taking it out is to then specifically outline in a separate section what is now required. So what is now required, it says it shall be there as a, as a bike hike trail. So before I move on from that, I just want to see if anyone has any questions about that.
Can you just start by...
Ms. Cordial?
Thank you. Could you just start by, you said that people have access to the marina and also the bike trail. So obviously, both, like, so in terms of pedestrian access, well, that was a specific question, is there going to be the opportunity for pedestrian access there?
Yeah, there's pedestrian access on that bike hike trail as well as for the marina harbor area.
Okay. So that whole idea then of needing an easement to protect the public from always having access?
Which is not necessary. All good? Okay, moving on. Setback from the river, this is just a clarification, moving up instead. So it's being changed from 50 feet to 40 feet, but the language that we put in specifically utilizes fixed point of the river. Before, it was not well-defined, so it's pretty much just outlining exactly from where to where and what that looks like. So it's just a clarification. The way it was before, it said the shoreline, that could be interpreted as pretty much anything. Any questions on that?
So now, maybe they use the high watermark.
Okay, the building height. The rendering of the project that you guys have seen time and time again, it's been splashing all over everything, is actually the tallest height there is 84 feet. So in the goal of building, there's been some discussion about how tall that actually is. It is 103 feet. So in the language, we have 110 feet as the maximum height. So I just want you all to know exactly what is or what isn't, because I know there's some stuff floating around there that is not accurate. So the pylon and the signage issue. I know there's one thing I just want to bring up as a clarification that we figured out between the planning commission and now. On page seven in your packet with the actual proposed changes, the planning commission put in a stipulation that the pylon sign could only be, maximum height of it could be 90 feet. We went back and saw that the speaker actually says it needs to be 80, so we want to make sure that we're complying with the speaker. So we just, yeah, that's one little change that we need to make in front of here before you guys adopt it, that used to be.
So in excess of 90?
It'll be 80.
If you go, if you're in your packet, it's page seven of the document, or page 18.
Okay. Gotcha, gotcha, gotcha. All right.
80 feet?
And then with regards to the signage, the planning commission has the ability to see what 19,000 square feet of signage looks like with different pictures that they were provided. So we actually have a couple folks here that have some handouts if you'd like to see. It'll help you kind of visualize a little bit better, I think. Some of the signs are, you know, sizable, but they're not odd. They're large, but they're, they look nice, they're on the side of the parking garage. So each of them, you know, through this package, we got a total square foot to each of them and then, you know, obviously they add up.
Andy Gray from Caporino Gaming, affiliate of Rush Street. Ms. Mancini had asked us to provide some of the pictures that we had shown the planning commission, so that's what I handed out to you. These are actual pictures and examples of Rush Street Gaming's facility in this plane, Illinois, outside of Chicago. And they're, they're not all of the signs that are on the building there, it's just represented as examples of the type of signage. And as you can see going through them, when you have the individual signs around the entire building as well as the parking garage, the square footage does start to add up. At this particular facility, the pictures that are showing those type of signage throughout the facility total, I believe it's 12,500 square feet. The difference between that location and Schenectady is that there is no hotel on site in this plane. So our engineers have determined that the 19,000 square feet, because the hotel would be there, would be the functional equivalent of the signage that exists at this plane. The types of signs that are shown are the exact same types of signs that would be here on the facility. The vast majority of them, as you can see, are affixed to the building. There was some concern about signage out along Erie Boulevard, billboards and massive signs. If that's not the case, the pylon sign, which is page two, will be located towards, you know, Erie Boulevard, of course. But the vast majority of the signage, as you can see, in this building is fixed. It's not bright, it's, some are electronic, some are externally illuminated. The larger ones on the parking garage, you can see have the lights that shine down. The little ones are electric inside, but they are not bright. They're professional looking, they're impressive looking when you see them at night. And they're, they provide professional experience. It's not, there was a concern understandably that, you know, 19,000 square feet, this casino, it's going to be garish, it's going to be tacky, it's going to look like the Las Vegas Strip along Erie Boulevard. It's not the case, as you can see from these pictures. These are, this is the type of signage that's proposed. The entire signage package still would have to be approved by the planning commission as part of site plan. City staff made sure that was expressly set forth in the proposed zoning amendments. So answer any questions about signage that we had? I would also point out that the 19,000 square feet, there was one other correction that the city staff made on page seven of the document. They changed the word attached uses to ancillary uses. And that's a change that's been made since the planning commission meeting as well. And the reason for that is the way it was written, there could have been, someone could have made an argument that if on the final design, for example, the parking garage wasn't attached to the casino, then we'd get additional signage because it wasn't attached use. So staff made it clear that the 19,000 square feet total applies to the casino and all ancillary uses, and that's why that word was changed, so.
And you cleared this up nicely, I think. One of the problems was everybody thought it was going to be one sign of 19,000 square feet. Obviously, we've gone to neighborhood meetings, we've gone to different areas, and their signs could be the length of a football field and everything else. And I think this is, this is why we're here, to clear up these misunderstandings that are out there. Again, everything is going to be done right on the button, just like it has to be. And again, the planning commission certainly is going to get all this information before he comes back to the council again. And again, I just applaud everybody here and thank you all for coming, but I think that's the important piece, clearing this up so we get all this information out on the table and doing it the right way.
Any other questions, Mr. Riggi?
Mr. Brick, this is the pylon sign?
Correct.
Okay, what's the height of this one?
I believe that one is 68 feet. 68. 68. And staff has recommended to change the proposed zoning for you to make ours not to exceed 80.
Any other questions, some signage?
None of signage.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
So the next was about disability access and disability parking. Obviously, all the, all the buildings and all the parking are going to have to ADA compliant, so just as a clarification for everybody, it has to be that way.
Including the number of spaces that we need to allocate for the disabled, very good, I think that's important. And again, to clarify, I'm sure the bike path will also be ADA compliant as well.
Ms. Porterfield.
So in terms of the ADA parking, is that language going to be included somewhere in the, in the zoning change?
It doesn't need to be. I mean, I defer to the legal counsel about whether or not we could or should, but I mean, it's federal law, so.
I'd recommend that you don't, because you don't have to provision in there that says nobody can murder each other in the parking lot either, but murder is also, you know, against the law.
So is there a particular reason that we just don't add the language that, that the federal guidelines will be followed in terms of ADA parking? Would that be extremely specific?
If it's something you feel strongly about, if we put in anything, but it's not something that's going to change what they do there with the requirements on our...
Okay, so I don't either way, it could, it's just putting it out there, you know, just including the language.
Any other thoughts on that?
Yeah, I appreciate it. I think that would work out as well.
Okay.
At least add in languages for...
All right, if we could just add one sentence in then?
Yeah, that's all. Just one sentence recovered, right? Let me do that.
Other questions? Okay.
Okay, and then just kind of like the timing, I just kind of wanted to walk through, because I think there's been some misconceptions about why there aren't renderings out and kind of all the, all the things that I've been hearing.
Sorry, I can't, pardon me, I couldn't concentrate on what you were saying.
That's all right, sure. So I just want to clarify like timing in terms of like process, just so everyone's on the same page about what is, what isn't supposed to be happening at this moment. So I know there's been some chatter out there about why there aren't renderings and conceptual drawings and things like that. So I know, you know, there's been a lot of illustrations of what this project is going to look like, but every day the project continues to change. So the actual confirmed site plan and, you know, associated drawings will not be completed until the developer is prepared to go in front of the planning commission to do site plan approval. So that's kind of one big misconception, I just want to put out there. The drawings you've seen are probably close to accurate, but the project literally keeps evolving every day. And then, you know, the next phase is now after this gets adopted, we can move towards site plan review. And just to kind of talk about the fact that there's the license, the casino could be granted the license as soon as March. So we want to make sure, and we're not trying to rush this process, but this is important that this gets done because it kind of sets the stage to continue the process going forward. And obviously, design has to happen and all those things kind of take some time.
Questions? Mr. Riggi.
If this passes as is, is the planning commission going to have the authority to change? We're going to have, whatever these changes are, can we get the planning commission authority to lower them if they don't, if they think it's too much? Or are they going to have that? I'd like to see that written into this, that they would have the ability to say, this is too big, this is too tall, this is too much. Because once it's written into the zoning, I'm afraid that, that'll be the, that's going to be the bible for what it can be. So is that, is the planning commission going to have the authority to make changes once this passes?
Yes, the planning commission definitely does. It's not something that we need to be writing in there, but the planning commission always has the ability, I actually got a stack of cases about it right here, but they can always evaluate the aesthetic visual impact of what's going to be put there. So even if you say that buildings can be 110 feet tall, if they look at the renderings, they can decide this isn't right for this certain project. You get into trouble where if they put something in that said, you can have, you know, a cellphone antenna that's 100 feet tall, and then the planning commission decided they didn't want to approve it because they didn't like the way the cellphone antenna looked, that would be a problem, because everybody knows what a cellphone antenna looks like, and if it's in there, you know, it's approved. But for this case, when it just says buildings that are up to 110 feet tall, that would definitely leave it open to them if they had legitimate reasons for not wanting to move forward with the way it looks to not approve it.
So they have that authority?
They definitely do.
It doesn't have to be written into the...
It does not.
Well, it's kind of like what we're talking about, the ADA thing too, that doesn't have to be written in either. I just feel more comfortable because sometimes, you know, when something is, is granted and it becomes, that's, it's okay.
Well, with something like that, don't hold me to the language right now, but off the top of my head, what I'd say, if the council really felt strongly about it, put something in that says nothing in this zoning ordinance diminishes the planning commission's ability to regulate the final site plan approval if that comes before it. Would you be okay with something like that?
That could be done, yes.
Well, wait, I might want to go over I'm going to find this.
Well, why would you have a problem with this?
Well, because the planning commission has what they do. We've got everything in here in the ordinance already, and the planning commission certainly will do their job and their due diligence to make sure it says what you have and what we're setting here. The handicap thing is an entirely different situation where we want to make sure they're following the federal guidelines. I'm not, I mean, I'm comfortable with the planning commission doing what they're supposed to do.
Ms. Porterfield.
I don't, I'm, I don't have a problem with the language being in there saying that, you know, that the planning commission, you know, can be up to that. It doesn't take any, it doesn't diminish the, the changes that were made to the legislation, it just articulates that it's still up to the planning commission, which we, I believe all agree that that's there. So I'm not sure why the language not having, having it in there, how that would change anything.
Well, and again, from my perspective, to both those changes, I'm generally against putting anything in actual legislative language that's not required to be there, because you put a whole bunch of stuff that doesn't need to be there, and then who knows, you know, how somebody can interpret it down the road. So it's best, in my opinion, not to put anything in there that we feel doesn't need to be in there to get where we want to go with this up.
Ms. Praza.
In both cases, I look at it and say, well, okay, that ADA is, is by law, not a choice, right? So we would be in serious problems, we have serious problems if we didn't follow and weren't ADA compliant, but it's not a point that I want to argue with, it's just to me, it's, we have to do that by law. And number two, this plan came from the planning commission, and they know what their powers are, and they approved this and recommended it to the council. So they know how they work within the guidelines and what they're recommending to us as the maximums of what they just recommended we approve as zoning changes. So again, not a point for argument as far as I'm concerned, but just seems unnecessary.
Legislation was written by the planning commission? Because we're talking about putting the actual in this legislation, though.
No, saying the planning commission recommended that we pass the zoning changes. Once they went through them with a fine tooth comb over four hours of discussion and said, we're good with this, this is what we recommend the council approves, knowing what their powers were and knowing what, you know, their guidelines were. So for, it seems like to me that for us to add something in about the planning commission, when the planning commission just passed it to us, knowing that they felt like for this parcel of land, this is what they were comfortable with the site plan being built around. So it, that's just a little bit of, a little bit confusing to me, but again, not a point, but...
Well, the way I look at it is that the public reads this as well, and so when it comes to the ordinances and the things that we pass, it's also the public that's reading it, not just, not just us and not just the planning commission. So for me to, for that language to be in there makes it extremely clear for someone outside of those two groups that we're talking about, that it's extremely clear where the authority lies. That's, so that's how I see that.
Other thoughts? Mr. Riggi.
Yes, I agree with Ms. Porterfield. I don't see where there's a harm to this. I don't see what the problem is where there's a harm. Since the site plan hasn't been seen by the planning commission, they just give them the authority, they'll know what their authority is by, by law that we're writing. We, we're making a major change, you know, so I don't see why we can't be as careful as we can when we pass this, because it's something that's going to be there for a long, long, long time. And I like the planning commission, yes, they are the authority that has the final say on this when they approve it. So I just want to be sure that they're going, going to realize that they can make some changes if they see it necessary, since we haven't seen the site plan, you know, they haven't seen the site plan, so we're kind of, it's kind of like a pig in a hole in a way.
The reality is that's their role, to do and make changes. I mean, we've seen it in any number of projects around the city.
Really, I think, reiterating that's their role, like doing that, that's my feeling.
It's almost being redundant. It's kind of, they have the power, I mean, they have the authority to, and they always follow guidelines?
Absolutely.
Okay, so I guess not support to put that in. All right. Okay.
Okay. And then just, so, so I'm kind of done with the discussion of the public hearing. If no one else has any questions about that, I wanted to move over to the seeker. Okay. So just so, so you know, we have to adopt the seeker findings prior to the zoning changes being adopted, so that's what, it's kind of like a one, two step that has to happen first. So the, it's really just asking you to adopt the lead agency findings. I believe the link to the seeker finding document was sent to you yesterday, it's also available online for quite a couple of months. The lead agency has a public hearing in September, all of that's kind of documented in the seeker, and it's just kind of adopting their final statement of findings. If you have any questions about that.
Lengthy document.
Yes.
Ms. Porterfield.
I do have a question on page 21, where it talks about the evaluation of changes. In here, it says that any site approvals or other city approvals for Mohawk Harbor will be conditioned upon federal and state approval. So I was just making sure that we, all those approvals were in place. Page 21, in my copy.
Oh, that's the copy of the seeker?
Yes.
Okay, okay, that's what I'm going to want you to work on. You don't have a copy of that here.
Yeah, she sent, it was sent out.
We have a hard copy, here's what I'm saying. That's what I'm saying.
You know, I can speak to that if you want. Are you talking about this first paragraph here under evaluation changes represented? So these two approvals, you're saying to actually make the harbor, where you have to widen the river a little bit and then dig it out to fill it, the Army Corps of Engineers has to approve that, as does the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation. And I don't know that that whole process is done yet, but that's not something that needs to be completed for the seeker to be fully completed.
So it does not need to be completed for this to pass?
Right. Everything that needs to be here for them to have a final finding that you can adopt is, is done.
Any other questions? All right, so the first item then is going to be to adopt the seeker findings, so I would entertain a motion to approve that. And Mr. Ferrari is second, and Ms. Porterfield, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then the other one is to approve the zoning ordinance that's been discussed.
We didn't quite get here. Sorry. On page eight of the zoning ordinance, page eight of, well, I don't know the page, this is on the other one, but I think it is.
Page 19.
Page 19. Okay. Number three. So I'm, I guess I'm really not clear why this particular language about the electronic signs is included just in, in this particular legislation.
With ASAC and changes out here, right?
Yes.
Okay, because I just want to show my research.
I think it's because we will actually be approving, voting on that for citywide.
Right, so...
Is something new?
What's that?
Isn't it something new in a city?
It's, it's, yeah, it is a new in the city. But this zoning change, change to where? Say again? The zoning change is just...
The C3 district, so, so the eight seconds, I believe, is citywide, I'm like looking at it.
Yeah, that's why we've got it. That's why I'm clear, it's why it's, why it's only, it's here, we aren't doing legislation for it because it's citywide.
It is, but you, in theory, could do it different, in different districts. And this is just to make it conform again to state DOT standards. And this is just to make it conform again to state DOT standards.
So we're going to see legislation coming through that will do the citywide because I, yes.
All right, any other questions on this ordinance before we vote? All right, then I will entertain a motion to approve it. Mr. Ferrari, second if I'm Ms. Porterfield, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Okay, you're good, okay, yep, good. Okay. The city's got all the development block grant.
Yes. So I just, I believe you have the schedule in your packet there. I just wanted to walk through the timeline for the CDPG process going through this year. The consolidated plan schedule also includes the five-year plan this year, so that's, that's from 2015 to 2019. And I just, we're still on track to meet the hot deadline, I know there's some concerns brought up about that. The timeline kind of was built in the way it was done with Mr. Herta before with like an additional month, so I've just kind of pulled the front end down a little bit. And it's just, everything's the same as it has been before, and I've got my first public hearing this Saturday in the community, and at 10 o'clock in the morning, I got some feedback from some that they thought that doing that on a Saturday morning would be good, to get some more neighborhood involvement. So we're going to try that in the next Wednesday, February 11th, on Crane Street, at the Bridge Christian Church at 6 o'clock. So if you want to attend, you're more than welcome. I've been doing a lot of different outreach methods as well, I know there was an article in the Gazette on Friday about it, so.
Questions? Mr. Cogger?
Jackie, again, thanks for getting that out, I really appreciate it. Are you going to send packets to the previous awardees like they've always done in the past?
Yeah, I sent a letter out to them informing them of the process with the timeline attached, and then directing them to the website when the applications are actually going to be live.
Okay, very good, okay, that's how it's working, okay.
Ms. Porterfield?
In years past, we've kind of seen the same organizations, entities coming through and getting funded. So will the process be, whether there be an opportunity for new programs or programs that have not been previously funded to be able to submit an application, be considered? I know a few years ago, they talked about maybe giving you so many years of giving CDPG money, that didn't last. You know, like after five years, you couldn't get money anymore, and that didn't last. But regardless, there's still been folks who've been, I won't say shut out of the process, but unable to get funded. So I'm just, you know, kind of concerned whether new programs or programs that have not been previously funded will have the opportunity to, you know, be considered.
Absolutely. You know, I think there's, obviously, there's been some changes in the department, and I think as we go forward, we're going to be looking at things a little bit differently, so I welcome anyone to apply.
Any other questions?
Good job.
Okay. All right, so we don't need to approve this, it's already out there, it's for information, so it's good. Okay, item number eight, the electronic message board. This again is the, is to deal with at citywide and following the DOT guidelines of eight seconds. Mr. Strickman, did you have?
I'm not sure if you want a presentation or not, this has been.
You have a board with him, something like that.
This has been discussed by the planning commission, the rate of change actually at three separate meetings, twice citywide at December, January meetings, and then again, as you just mentioned, in the waterfront, for waterfront zoning. So it's really to make it eight percent, eight seconds, conforming to the DOT's requirements, or DOT's allows.
Questions?
And again, so existing signs will be grandfathered into this, I mean, will be able to fall into this eight seconds as well, Steve?
Yes, if they're, if they're changing less, they will be able now to change.
Okay, very good.
Any other questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve this. Okay. Ferrari, Ms. Porterfield, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Mr. Strickman again, calling for a public hearing on the zone change, State McCloud.
Okay, we had a presentation two weeks back by Atlantic Development requesting the zone change for the parcel at the corner of State and McCallum, C3. The, the planning commission at the January 14th meeting did make a recommendation that the city council call for the public hearing and adopt this language, and they had, basically, the, what they were asking about or recommending was that parking in the front yards of the buildings would be allowed with the understanding that the developer's going to maintain to the maximum extent possible of retaining the street while the building's along State Street, and that with one parking space per 200 square feet of retail space, that would be allowed, and also that there would be no maximum building square footage on the site, which really, as the zoning changes, would allow for a large footprint. So basically, I'm requesting a call for public hearing on February 9th, having a public hearing on February 23rd, and then a vote March 2nd and March 9th.
Ms. Porterfield?
Okay. Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, very good. And the name change for purchasing 367 12th Avenue.
Executive session.
Set.
I can handle this, it's a property that the council's already authorized to be sold to Emilio Genuzano. What they'd like to do is just purchase it in the name of the company instead of personally. So none of the terms or conditions for the deal, the price, or anything about that is changing, it's just a resolution allowing us to go right to the company instead of to a person first.
Questions? Mr. Cogger?
So we haven't approved this purchase yet, correct? We're talking about that executive session?
No, we have approved it.
We have approved it.
We have approved it.
We have approved this one two days ago.
But we lived in his name as opposed to the name of the corporation. So.
Ms. Ruben?
Is this, this company has additional buildings connected to it?
Yeah, truthfully, I'm not sure, and the real reason that this, we're kind of trying to work with the buyer on this, because what they could do, they could buy it in their name and entrant their rights to it also in the city anyway, so this is kind of just taking out the middleman to make it a little bit easier.
Ms. Prazza?
Yeah. It would be nice if we can have a little record of this company before we, you know.
Land holding company?
Land holding company?
Land holding. Ms. Prazza?
I agree. Looking back, I want to remember, I want to know whether it was put forth as being owner-occupied or rental property, and then I also want to know what other properties, if any, that the company owns in this area. I mean, we've been going through this process very strategically, and I think it's important, and I think, you know, we can see that by Monday night, I have no problem with it, but I'd like to know, number one, if this, and I can date back to my papers, but if this, if they propose this as owner-occupied, and number two, what other properties this company owns, and are they up to?
Are they covered in taxes and things like that?
Yeah.
Let's hold this, let's hold this for executive session, and it's in, that information is in the packet.
The information that we're asking has put into the executive session.
Oh, okay, great, okay.
All right.
Basically, it's the same information you had two cycles ago.
All right, so we'll take items 10, items 10 through 13, will go and need to be dealt with in executive session, so if there's nothing else to come before city development and planning, I'll entertain a motion to recess. Okay, second, Mr. Ferrari, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I'm going to call government operations into order.
Into order.
And if there's no objection, I'm going to take one thing out of order, because Mr. Waterfield has stayed to give us a little presentation on the homeowner percentage on property taxes that are in arrears, and I'll free him up to go after his presentation, and thank him for staying, and, so just give you a little bit of, a little bit of background. We've been talking as a council for quite some time now on how we might give a little bit of relief to our homeowners that through hardship have fallen into arrears under certain criteria. So I had a meeting with Ms. DeGenova and Mr. Waterfield, and I don't even want to say we, because it's pretty much they tossed around scenarios of what this might look like. We originally talked about, well, if somebody falls in arrears, they're in arrears for two years under certain circumstances, what does that look like? But with our foreclosure process, it's very, very intricate, and I thank both Mr. Waterfield and Ms. DeGenova for all of their creative thinking, because we went through a lot of different scenarios. So we came down to two different scenarios that we like to put forth for discussion as we had talked about. One, which Mr. Waterfield will illustrate to us tonight, is really a matter of education, because what happens is someone falls in arrears, they probably panic, because now they're in arrears, and they have these mounting interest charges. But really, with a little discussion and a little bit of recommendation, not guidance and not, you know, but just here are your options available to you, it's amazing the difference if you pay a small percentage every single month versus if you panic and just keep paying on your current taxes and leave this big ugly beast over here alone, right? So Mr. Waterfield is going to show us the difference of that, and then I will bring to you the other scenarios that we talked about. So I'll hand it over to you, Mr. Waterfield.
Can I just interrupt for one thing that's on my mind here, if I may?
Sure.
Speaking about being late on your taxes, going to your original presentation, can I make partial payments online? I forgot about that question. In other words, as, as bringing those $849, I only want to pay 500, I can pay the 500. Okay, that was, okay, thank you very much, good.
You have money, we'll take it.
Exactly, I know you will.
You're going to say no.
Very good, thank you.
A little background of what you're going to see, is this is about an average tax lien from 2013. This particular person paid their January installment, and that stopped. So they didn't pay their April, July, and October, and then the year became a lien. First screen, this is the screen that I look at every day, it's a little bit easier. The bill amount is $2,037.04, so that's the amount of the tax lien. In this scenario, they didn't do anything. So when I printed the screen on January 27th, it had accrued $458.25 in interest up until January 27th. At 12%, that $458 would be 257.3, so everyone's owed about $200. The next scenario is the one I like to ask.
Thanks for telling us that.
This is if he had come in on July 1st and wanted to pay the whole tax lien off on July 1st. The interest would have been 212.13, which is 10.4%, because, you know, we're always looking at the 21%, but the 21% only is if you don't pay it for the full year.
Right, right.
So half the year, half the interest. So if he came in and paid it on July 1st, he would have paid 2,200 instead of almost 2,500. And the third scenario is paying $100 a month. So I went into our test environment and applied a payment of $100 every month from the time he became a lien, between 2014 and bill due on January 27th, to $1,300, $100 a month. Left his balance now of $1,078 versus 2,500. So just a, you know, a $100 a month payment really reduced the total amount. So rather than not doing anything at all, I don't think $100 is really, you know, a lot, so that's the balance amount, $1,078, he would have paid 350.500 or so. So it just gives you a little insight as to what, you know, timing has to do with it and what monthly payments has to do with it.
Right. Again, just, and going to Mr. Ferrari's point earlier, is this some, I think this is something that we'd really like to see if we can set up on the online piece, where again, if I want to try to pay $100 a month, I have this automatically deducted out of my checking account or whatever I'm paying it from, again, to try to get myself caught up, rather than coming to you every month, City Hall or however we make payments, I just think that's another way that we can be able to take advantage of the online system for somebody who's in areas like this, and again, you know, to Mr. Ferrari's point, I think that would be something, again, take a peek at, I mean, just another way of expanding this.
From my understanding, it would be checking account as opposed to a credit card, I mean, so, I mean, yeah.
You use the e-check, you use the 50 cent e-check.
Certainly something that we should look into. So if we don't start getting a lot of return checks, that's a good.
That might be one of the problems, is that you're getting a lot of returns by not having adequate funding.
Well, then the bank charges your fee, and I'm sure.
And the bank charges fees.
Well, they don't have to have an auto deduct, right? They can opt for an auto deduct.
Yeah.
Correct.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So these are your own bank account? I pay bills all the time, except I prefer payments.
Yeah, we could quit paying.
I pay so much on this bill, $100 a month. So that's also an option, if you do it on your own bank account.
So after much discussion, these are the two scenarios we bring forth. The first scenario is there's no need for home rule, and what we bring forth is when delinquent notices are sent, when delinquent notices are sent out in November. So historically, another notice doesn't go out until September, which is a very long gap for someone who's falling behind on their taxes. So instead, we propose that we add correspondence in February, once the outstanding balance has actually become a lien, advising the homeowner that the city can offer information to make the repayment of the lien efficient and thus minimizing the interest accrued, which I think is something we can work on right away. Maybe we offer some scenarios, you know, that the homeowner can look at, maybe we talk about our online payment capability, maybe it's a page that we add to the online payment saying, if you're falling behind, here are ways that you can catch up efficiently. We don't want to tell anyone what to do, that's not our place, but just an educational system to say, listen, don't be afraid, I mean, we all get into trouble sometimes, but this is the way you can make it up, and without accruing a monumental amount of interest. So that's scenario one, number one. Scenario number two, which I think Mr. Falatico probably wants to weigh in on also, in our home rules scenario, which would be brought forth for legal review, and I credit this completely to Ms. DeGenova's brain, because like I said, we went around and around. If the STAR program participant falls behind on their current taxes, and they're going to have an outstanding balance that becomes a lien, then they would qualify for a reduction in their interest rate of X percent if the following criteria was met, that they've made payments to the prior year's taxes that equal a minimum of X percent of the principal, and I bring that forward for discussion. So, okay, you fell behind this year, but last year you paid at least 50% of your taxes. That they have participated in the city information system on how to efficiently pay back the lien, and that they have not had a lien in the past X number of years, then they would be able to access this lower interest rate for, you know, for that year while they were able to catch up. And then if the participant defaults on the lien, because we talked about, okay, well, what if they don't do what they need to do, right? Well, that's the beauty of our foreclosure process, because once they default on that lien, that following year, that foreclosure, that process is going to start, so it kind of self-polices itself, right? Because it would just end up that they didn't pay their taxes, and then the process would go forward as the process goes forward. So that's what we bring to the table for discussion with legal, or that's what I'd like to send to legal with input from the council, if you like that idea, for Carl to kind of go through if you haven't already, and say, this is doable, that's not doable, and then we can go forward from there, or I don't know, if we want to just try the education process for that, you know, I'm bringing it for comment and consideration.
That was my thought, to try the education piece first, and then reevaluate how that's worked, and then maybe move to the second one. I don't feel strongly one way or the other.
Yeah, I think it's a good idea to, to remind people, because then it's a long gap between, and not that they don't know that they're falling behind, but just to say, there are some opportunities to rectify this before it gets really, really out of control, and, because I think you're right, some people just get scared, they panic, and like, if I do nothing, it'll go away. So just to send that gentle reminder, saying, you know, we can help you with this, or there are ways for you to remedy the situation before, you know, your house goes into foreclosure, basically, is what it boils down to, so.
Yes, Mr. Ruby?
This would be through mail correspondence, this education process?
Yeah. Well, yes, there would be a flyer or pamphlet sent, people saying, okay, you're falling behind, come in and talk to us now before this gets out of hand. We're not the big bad ugly, we want to help you. Other thoughts?
Are we going to try to do the online piece as well with that?
Sure, I'll work with Mr. Caluccio and Ms. Adamac to see if we can, you know, get some, I mean, it makes sense, right? To have a little button that says, you know.
You could even pay $50 a week or something, if the opportunities are there for you to easily.
Right.
If the opportunities are there for you to easily have some money or reduce your debt.
And we're talking STAR and enhanced STAR as well, correct? Obviously, we're talking enhanced STAR with the seniors as well.
Yeah, it's all the STAR programs.
Star.
Whoever's, yeah.
What's that wrong with it?
Nah, not the seniors, we're the veterans.
No, what I'm just going to say, no, and actually, I'm going back into that, we're about the veterans.
Well, if they're a homeowner, they're in the STAR program. So then they fall under this.
And if they're falling behind, they will be entitled to...
Yeah, they're covered anyway.
Okay, so for clarification, what I'm taking away from this discussion is, we're going to focus on the education piece right now, and see if that is helpful, but we're not going to go forward with the other scenario at this time.
Well, the online piece as well. Do you make any exceptions?
The online piece is part of the education piece, yeah.
The education piece could be something where we showed you the resources up there, and they could be documents that are there that...
Yeah, you know, I think the way Mr. Waterfield has brought it forward with some scenarios to say, "Okay, well, look, this is, this is what happens. At the end of the year, if you don't pay anything, this is what you're going to owe. If you give me $50 a week, you know, this is how much you can diminish your, you're going to need $50 a month, this is how much you can, you know, save on interest, on the accrual of interest, so..."
But these people in arrears, they'll all get a hard copy in the mail.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say.
When, once you're, when you go into a lien state, you know, when you, and I would assume people that already have liens, we can get the information also. But when you haven't paid your taxes in November, you get a notice saying, "Oh, yeah, I made your taxes." And then if you still haven't paid them in February, it becomes a lien at that point, correct? Or January, it becomes a lien. So in February, we would send out a thing saying, "Okay, you now officially have a lien on your taxes. We can give you information on how you can, you know, effectively pay that off."
So that would be part of this dedication of piece online with the mail in February?
Yeah, the information will be static online all the time, and then the people that have liens in February will get this in the mail.
Good.
Very good.
Yes.
So that's where we're stopping for now.
So how do we determine the effectiveness of this particular plan, and at what point do we say, you know, we need to gear up and maybe go to step two?
I think the citizens will let us know via letter or email, and like, you know, when we started the book, I think that's how we entered this conversation, is when we started the foreclosure, foreclosure process, we were getting letters from people saying, "I fell in hard times several years ago, and I haven't been able to catch up," and that was kinds of things, which raised our awareness to us when we looked at it and said, "Okay, well, what can we do?" So I think at that point, we say, "We have this information that can help you, and then if we have an influx of that, we'll have to look at it again as counsel." I mean, I have the other scenario ready.
So we don't have a timeframe, we're just going to kind of like...
I'd say you got to hope a whole year at least, right?
Well, that's my question, is there, because there are timeframes to say, "Okay, this is working, you know, and six months, do we look at it again, or do we just kind of wait for the flow of concerns, whatever?" How, what is your timeframe? I mean, I think it's a good, it's a good strategy, but I think that we need to have a timeframe as we go forward, say...
I can put it on my calendar to bring up again in a year, but to me, the measure is whether we're getting feedback from constituents or not, right? I mean, we can look at it in a year, but how do we know whether it's working or not? Less people are in arrears, I don't know. Some people just don't pay their bills, you know what I mean? Like, I'm open to suggestions. Mr. Koosh?
Yeah, wouldn't we see that at budget time too, Deb? Wouldn't we see that, that income, that funding coming through your department as well? When we, when we go through the budget process, that we're seeing this additional interest penalties? Would that show?
I think maybe one of the ways to quick judge it is, when we first begin to do this additional outreach, we have, we're going to be having dialogue with people, we'll be able, Mr. Parker will be able to tell everyone, "Well, I reached out to 20 people and got back to me two reviewing payments." I think that would be the way to judge whether or not the outreach is effective enough. Which I'll stop ahead, just, it's probably a best one.
It's just, I, I have no problem measuring it, I'm just not sure how we would measure it.
Well, that's exactly, I think you mean the whole, the whole cycle.
Right.
Yes, exactly.
Can you run report to see how many people, I mean, who is in the inference? Run a report to see if coming is coming...
Number wise, right?
During a period of time, unable to give us a feedback to see if it's, you know, making any sense?
I think that would be ways to run the report to see who's actually coming in to pay.
And we can track.
Yeah, we can track it. I think that would be more...
So maybe set a benchmark of last November, I mean, or what, this January? I mean, here we are, right? So maybe set this as the benchmark, we'll get it again after the first of the year next year. Okay. Okay, well, what I will do is work with Mr. Waterfield and Mr. Caluccio, and then we'll bring you the piece before we go forward with it, see if you have any input, and we'll table the home rule suggestion for now. Yes, is that what I'm hearing?
Yes.
Great, okay. Onward. Thank you, Mr. Waterfield, and thank you, Mr. Genova. And thank you, Mr. Caluccio. I closed finance in this ad map before I formally thanked you all in hard work. I was very focused, very focused, all business. Okay. So the abandoned and extended parking on the city streets, we went over this two weeks ago, looking to make changes to, in my, my, my point making the changes is just to 248-89, letter C, which we kind of deemed as ineffective and somewhat subjective and not being utilized. So we were going to marinate on that for a couple of weeks and come back for discussion. So I open it up for discussion at this time. Mr. Ruby?
I understand, you know, your thoughts on this, whether it should be changed, but then like today, there's some cars that have been, they've been covered with snow for weeks, so obviously, unless somebody left town and they're coming back, they went to Florida for the winter, could we leave those cars on the street?
That's a different provision. If you look at the first part of the law, it says that it's unlawful to park standard inoperable vehicle if it's, there's snow, that's also worked into that, if they have broken windshield, flat tires...
Right, but let's say there's none of those things, just covered with snow.
It says, 48 consecutive hours following the cessation of a snowfall or similar weather conditions determined by the Commissioner of General Services to be hindering or obstructing snow removal operations, parentheses, snowbound, with it, which falls under the 48-hour rules. And I think, my personal opinion is all that to stay exactly the way it is, because it's crucial, and I know that they do act on it actively, you know, they use that part of the law. It's the second page where it says, "A motor vehicle shall be deemed to be abandoned if left unattended," and then under letter C, "for more than 48 hours after the parking such vehicle shall become illegal if left on a portion of highway or public place on which parking is legally permitted." So in other words, you're either legally parked, but after 48 hours of sitting there, so I come home on a Friday night, I don't move my car until Monday morning when I go to work, I'm illegal and they can tow my car away.
So has this been a problem? Is that why we're bringing this up? I mean, I...
The problem was, as I stated two weeks ago, I got a phone call from a woman who had a vehicle parked in front of her aunt's house, her aunt was in the hospital, it was not moved, it was hindering the egress of the driveway, and she was actually told that unless it was inoperable or snow-covered or whatever, there was nothing we could do to remove it. So I went digging into this, I met with traffic, and they said, "Well, no, actually, there still is a 48-hour law, but it seems to me that that's a very unfair law, and it's not being utilized and it's not clear to parking enforcement." So, which is why they were here talking to us about it two weeks ago. So the idea was to allow for somebody to go on vacation and not be illegally parked, with also setting some sort of a time limit, so if someone is parked in front of your house, you can't get in and out of your driveway conveniently or whatever, there's some sort of time limit that you could have it reported in, in total way. That's not, you know, if the person's out on vacation or something of those, that nature.
Well, on many of our street right now, I think we do have alternate parking, so I mean...
Right, but in many, we don't.
We don't.
I live on one.
So he doesn't have...
And so do many others. You know what I mean? It's not, I mean, we have a lot of non-restricted street parking.
What would an appropriate time limit look like?
Well, that's what I'm bringing...
That's a, that's a thing. That's very good to say.
I was really wanting to even do it.
What is a reasonable time?
Oh, we talked about two weeks, you know, being a reasonable amount of time, usually when people go away on vacation, if they're going away from work, then two weeks, they're...
What, you're going to mark their tires? You're going to put that...
They're going to mark their tires out there?
Well, we have, parking enforcement, I've talked to parking enforcement, they feel comfortable with that. They feel as if, if the law, the complaint is lodged, they would also talk to the person and say, "Please report again in two weeks." So it's, you know, we raise our awareness to it, whatever. I just think that, right now, it says it's illegal to park in the same spot for 48 hours, which I think is ridiculous and needs to be changed.
I think that part needs to be changed. So that next time limit would be from the time of the complaint?
Right, I mean, yeah, the parking enforcement wouldn't be going around marking tires and covering. I mean, it would be, it would be put into motion through a complaint, you know, that somebody, I mean, I've had, I had another woman say, she watched this person pull up, open the hood, take the battery out, close the hood, walk away. Well, that's technically inoperable, but who the heck knows? You know what I mean? No, the police aren't going to know that driving by, you know what I mean? That kind of thing. So at least you can make a complaint, say, "Listen, this car's been parked here for several days and it's not being moved, I think somebody needs to check it out."
I'm good with a two-week time limit.
I think two weeks is reasonable, as long as it's, you know, I mean, if somebody complains and then they have two weeks to, as long as it's notified, the owner of the vehicle's notified that, you know, "Your car's been there and you have this amount of time," as long as that notification is, is part of that. I think that's important, that we just don't comment.
Oh, yes, and as parking said, they try to locate the owner, they go, you know, ring their doorbell, they, you know, they say, "There's concern from your neighbor about this car, are you going to move it?" You know, that kind of thing. Well, that's how it plays now.
So then we can do it right now here, rather than changing this? We can do the exact thing of them reaching out to whoever owned the car?
That's what I understand.
Now, that's what they've been doing.
Just for clarification.
I would not change it. My personal, I would not change it. Yeah, it's, I just can't see us enforcing this.
No, I...
There is just no way we're going to be able to put a two-week time limit or...
We don't have the resources.
Well, right now, we have a 48-hour time limit, which is really unfair to people, because, let me tell you, as a person who parks on...
You can probably count on one hand how many we're told.
Except if my neighbor wants to call right now and say, "This car's been parked here for more than 48, 48 hours," legally, they can do that. I don't think that's...
I think they have to mark the tire for it.
Yeah, they can have to mark the car.
Okay, well, that would be another 48 hours.
But you're not really enforcing, from what I understand, they have to enforce it. It has to be an exception, maybe.
I don't think they're enforcing snowbound cars.
When you're knocking your neighbor's door, you find out who he is, you're not going to go and have him move the car. Simple as that.
Not at most.
Not at most.
No.
I don't think...
I don't think, my, my opinion is not enforceable.
Yes.
It's not enforceable.
I, I don't. I don't think it's not enforceable, I just, I don't believe it. I have seen places where I know it's not enforced, because I drive by the same car over and over, snowbound and just sitting there. So I'm not saying it's not enforceable. And then maybe we do need to do some, put something in place for those cars that have left, or removed.
I think all you have to do is call and report, Deb.
Call and report, Deb, and traffic will be there to take care of it.
And those are not the cars that I'm concerned about, it's the legally parked cars that I'm concerned about. You know, the legally parked cars that are abandoned right now. I mean, and then there's the legally parked cars that the person's on vacation, and they come over and they find their car towed. Because, you know, I mean, technically, if it's 48 hours, you're on vacation for a week and somebody calls and complains because you feel like they're encroaching on the driveway or they don't like, whatever, if you're parked there for 48 hours, your car gets towed.
I don't know, I just can't see this happening.
No, I can't.
I can't see this happening.
But if something could, if they tell you...
I think could happen.
They absolutely could, it's the law, it's out of the law, is it?
So then what's the problem? Change it to two weeks?
Yeah, I'm not sure.
It's the harm in putting, making it two weeks, yeah. That's... Yeah, if it's there now, and we think 40, 48 hours seems unreasonable, and there are some people who will go to the letter of the law and say, "Here it is, 48 hours, I want it out of there." What's wrong with changing it to two weeks if it's not? Right? It's not being enforced now? Let's figure it out.
But maybe with off-street parking being such a premium for some people too, you know, somebody's hogging a space, even if they went on vacation, that somebody else could use. I mean, that's another issue too. I think there was a spirit to this 48-hour rule, but when it was done, because that can happen. I mean, people can take a space and keep it for themselves. And that's something, I know in Albany, it's a big problem, and I know in Schenectady now, with multiple car families that we have, people have to park on the street even if they have a driveway or a garage. So is it fair to the other neighbor that they can't use the spot? Yeah, you know, so there's a lot to be considered.
Okay, so is it that issue?
That'd be my personal feeling.
Very good. Lots of citizens of Schenectady understand that they're legally parked, they can be towed after 48 hours.
There you go. Call Gemma to verify, and I'd kosher, we'll take care of you.
I'll buy you by the law.
Very good. On to the next thing. The Housing Standard Review Board. So I emailed you, we got the information in the packet two weeks ago. I also emailed you the suggestions from Corporation Council, because as Chapter 68 stands right now, first of all, some of the duties outlined for this board are illegal, and others, really, I don't think mesh with the current setup of our Code Department and how the Code Department has come forward. So just calling for your input on this before I go to legal with, or actually concur with legal about the changes as suggested.
I remember that's an email I sent a few years ago to the council, and I don't know if it reiterated at the beginning, but the suggestion from legal is that you do nothing, but if you were going to do something, that would comply with what the law is.
Sure. This is a board as it stands on our books, and when we were going through our boards and deciding what boards were going to stay, what boards were going to go, just like we took action on reinstating the affirmative action board, and also with input from Slick, who would like to see this board put back in service, just bringing it forward for discussion. We left the board active at the time, but just bringing it forward for, for discussion. And whether we want to see the board active again, and then if we want to see the board active again, or, excuse me, if we want to actually appoint people to the active board as it stands, the changes that would need to be made to the duties of the board.
I'd like to see the, the board active again. It's something that has come before, it's before, it used to be a certain concern from groups who are involved in housing, so, you know, we're always talking about how we want citizen input and, you know, to support what we're doing here in the city, so I'd like to see that board come active.
The only place I would like to see the board up and running.
Okay.
Just, just after that, can we have Mr. Schilling input at some time?
Well, I thought what I would do is get your suggestions about what you think is good in the legislation, what you think isn't, and then go to legal, and then once we get a document working, we'll run it by Mr. Schilling for his input, and then we'll bring it back to the council, and then we'll go forward from, from there.
Perfect.
So this is a first step for everybody to take a look over the last two weeks and bring their suggestions to the table. So do they have anything that jumped out at them, or changes they wanted to see before we go through the next step of the process?
I like Mr. Falatiko's suggestions. I mean, I like Mr. Falatiko's suggestions.
Just going to talk around him.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, I'll work with Mr. Falatiko, and then you'll give that in front of Mr. Schilling, and then we will bring it back to the council in two weeks. Does that work for you, or do you want a little longer?
Yeah, we'll do that in two weeks.
Two weeks?
You can make that two in two weeks.
Yes.
Great.
Very good.
Okay, any other business to come before government operations?
Yes, Mr. Ferrer.
Yes, Mr. Reedy?
This is for the mayor, because I get this question all the time, I'm sure probably you do too, why don't we call a snow emergency when there's major snowstorms? I have made three calls today about that.
Well, do I use the Albany model?
I don't know.
Well, if there's a snow emergency to go in to affect eight o'clock tonight, we clean the streets.
We clean one side of the streets, the other side of the streets aren't where cars are parked, they're not...
But we will go through and post and plow those on a systematic basis where we have the resources to do it. Again, in terms of the overall management of a storm, I have not seen a set of circumstances where a snow emergency would increase the efficiency or allow the city to do it in a better manner than what we're doing just by...
But where there's not alternate side parking, mayor, that's a problem, because one side of the street doesn't get...
But, okay, so tomorrow, we post all the streets, I don't have the crews to go around and clean all the spots, and people are mad because they've moved their cars and gone back, so what we will do now is go through them, post them, and clean them out, and actually do some of the snowing.
I mean, I was told by somebody that works here that if we have a 36-hour plan, it would work, instead of a 48-hour plan, it would work.
Well, then you should have that person talk to me.
Okay.
And that's, if I can, Karen, that's one of the problems with Albany as well, you know, you're talking about alternate parking once even or out, or whatever it is, but let me just interject, and when the cars do go to the other side, it's plowed, now you cannot get down the street because the other side of the street is not plowed, so it becomes another issue as well.
But that happened in some of our city streets today that I went down. Alternate side parking, people moved to the other side, the plow didn't come by, so you couldn't go down the street, people, cars were getting stuck. So yes, we're right on top of it all the time, that's fine, but at least people would know that it's going to get done, because sometimes it doesn't get done, mayor, I have to tell you, the streets don't get done, and you see those spots where cars were, and they stay there until spring comes.
Four hours.
That's your call.
I live in the budget, council's given, but it is, it drives up the cost, we have to manage it.
Okay, so it's, that's the answer I'll give the people, then it's the cost, that's the factor, right?
It's a factor.
Some people feel that they pay enough in their taxes, that they should have this service, the streets should be sparkling clean, so that's, I'm just reiterating what I...
That's the goal, generally, we're handling these storms in a very good manner.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Okay, anything else to come before government operations? Ask for a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
All was in favor.
Cult order claims.
Move, we go into executive session?
Yes.
Claims, also move. I forget what I was going to go. Hi.
Aye.